Here's our town clerk.
Don't forget, don't forget, you have to wash your hands before you can leave the table.
Something like that. How are you Jackie? Oh, you're not muted.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, yes.
Can you hear me now?
Go sit.
I don't want to sit right the, right now. Trying to get my phone to stand up here.
Oh, a little foam cradle, that's what we should make.
I know, it's just, well, I have it plugged in, so it's got the plug on the end.
For Zoom meetings.
Yes. Alright, there we go.
That's good.
We have a lot that one to get in?
There are quite a few, I ended up sending them to everybody that attended the last meeting.
Okay.
For this subject and then a few others. Ask for the link.
A little sleepy tonight Bill.
I am.
Yeah, it's that kind of a day.
Yeah. Yeah, I could take a nap right now, actually I could have taken a nap about four o'clock.
How was your day Ashley?
It's good, a lot of running around.
Good.
It's good.
Izzy's busy, how are you feeling?
Good.
Okay.
My energy's coming back, so.
Good. Did you, did Bill tell you you're gonna be manning the grill on Friday?
Oh, I am.
Make sure you have a worm coat.
I'm not sure you guys are gonna wanna eat. My husband will tell you I'm not very good at cooking.
As long as you don't smash the hamburgers, you have to let them be.
Yeah.
Once it smushed the hamburgers are. I think Al might be a hamburger smasher.
Is he?
I think so, I'm gonna.
So I'll have to tell him to go easy.
Yes. You're the only one on so far Bill?
Yeah.
Yep.
Vince is on.
Hi Vince.
Oh, out of the town board she meant.
Yeah.
Board members, yeah, we got a few people on. What time is it? I have, my phone says six fifty-seven.
That's what mine says.
But the phone at the office says six fifty-three.
Yeah, mine's, I think mine at my desk is slow too.
Yeah, my phone says six fifty-seven.
Okay. Councilman Hapner's in the house.
Councilman Hap is in the house.
Get this to do anything here, hold on. Yeah, I need a phone cradle. Don't mind me, I'll just be dancing around for a few minutes here. I got it wrapped around with a stapler, a tape dispenser, and a thing of sticky notes, so it should be good.
Let's see if that holds. If it does, you can patent your, your phone.
Yeah.
Cradle design.
It'll look good in the office.
You got the squirrel Lauren?
I have the squirrel.
Okay.
Richard, Lauren?
Yeah?
Laura?
Oh, I thought that was a question.
No, I'm just trying to see who's there.
Count your heads.
Hi.
Too early for a question.
Who was, who was that?
Maria Elena.
Hi Maria.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, good.
This Jordan, we met today, she's our new neighbor in Shady. Welcome to the meeting.
Thanks for having us.
We're on here Bill, Stephen. Steve, Cindy, how are you guys?
Hello, here we are, we did it correctly.
You got it. That's so hard.
Zoom is definitely one of the easier platforms.
Oh yeah.
It's easy, but this one needed a passcode, so I had to go back to the email to put the passcode in.
Oh yeah. Yeah, we do that to protect ourselves from hackers.
Absolutely.
Actually, I have great admiration for you, I ran a Zoom meeting for the historical society annual meeting this weekend.
How'd it go?
I did okay, but boy, it's a very, you know, a lot of things to push and buttons and. People wanna talk and then they don't, I'm mute.
Yeah, the one thing that I don't like is that you can't necessarily see everybody that's in the meeting.
Well, I can't because I'm on an iPad, and iPad goes to different screens, so I gotta, I gotta swipe through the screens to see if everybody's there.
Yep.
So you're afraid someone would hack us and what, make us say silly things?
It's happened.
It's happened.
And it's not hard to make you say silly things whether they hack us or not.
It'd be a waste of their time, wouldn't it?
Ask the town of Asopus, they, they, uh, one of their first meetings, they got hacked and it was not pretty.
Yeah, well, let them come, I, forty years in the construction business, I can swear with anyone.
I think there were graphics to boot.
And some religion.
So I think I see all the town board, where was Reggie, Reggie, Laura, yeah, okay. So the board's present, it is seven oh one, so I'm gonna call to order the special meeting of the Woodstock Town Board for October twenty-seventh. Before we start on the, the only topic of the night, I am gonna ask if the board would be willing to do one resolution, our highway superintendent called last minute begging if we would do a resolution to authorize him to advertise for an H M E O position. He's been putting word out there for the last couple of weeks, he's advertised it locally, but no takers, so he wanted to put an ad in the paper. Would you guys be willing to entertain such a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make that motion to allow the superintendent to advertise the H M E O position, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes, so now let's talk about dumping in Shady.
Do we have, do we have to?
I'm afraid we do, because it's a big problem. Lauren, you wanna, you wanna kick it off, you want me to kick it off?
Well, I said pretty much everything I wanted to say last week and yeah, I'll, I'll stand by that, I'm getting prices for testing from different labs and then we'll see how it works from there, but I mostly wanna hear what everybody else has to say.
So you know what, why don't we do this, I, I think that I saw Vince and his Jim on the line tonight? Vince?
Yes, we're here.
Is Jim? Is Jim on the line as well?
I, I am on the line.
Okay, so why don't you gentlemen give us an update of, of the progress you've made in a week? Actually, let me start off with one quick note, you know, I we had a meeting last week and, and the town board wasn't in total agreement, but I, I, I do wanna let the public know that there are, most of this we do agree with, we agree that this is a big mess, that it needs to be taken care of, that it's a, it's a health and safety issue and we are all committed to seeing this cleaned up, and by cleaned up, I mean the dirt removed. Board, did I, did I misspeak there?
No, I think that's pretty accurate.
Okay, so, so we, we are united in, in that cause, just in case there was any doubt. So with that, Vince and Jim, I'll let you, you know, we had, we had some thoughts last week, we wanna talk about testing and we wanna talk about cleanup, so why don't you let us know where you're, you're at at this moment?
Go Jim.
Okay. Oh, no, sorry, you're not, okay.
I'm, so we've looked at, the first thing that, that we wanna do is sample the homeowner's well on the adjacent property. If indeed this material is leaching contaminants into the subsurface, the nearest sensitive receptor is the adjacent homeowner's well. And if there is contamination getting into groundwater, it will show up there first. So we took a look at the sub part five list of analytes to sample for, and we've come up with a list and we've provided it to the town and the towns engineer for review and approval. Once they're okay with those results, we'll go and sample the adjacent homeowner's well, assuming they'll give us permission. You know, we'd have to enter into some kind of agreement with them to allow us onto their property to sample. Those results would be available in about somewheres in the neighborhood of five to ten days after they were collected. We could get them sooner, but I'm not sure that the additional cost is warranted. I'm not convinced that this material has leachable contamination in it. It's more of the type of contamination that stays bound to the soil, and so the impacts that you would experience would be experienced if you were playing in the soil, kids playing in this soil would be a bad thing. You, you know, you know, planting vegetables in it would probably not be appropriate. But for the most part, the types of contaminants that we see in construction and demolition debris aren't very mobile, and what I mean by that is rainwater doesn't leach them out very easily, they bond really tightly to the soils. So for instance, there's chunks of concrete in there, that, it, concrete oftentimes contains heavy metals and, you know, was, and ash was used as a binder, but that stays together really well, so it doesn't leach out of the concrete. You know, it takes a lot of action or very acidic rain, and I, when I say acidic, I mean like, you know, four or, or lower before you start breaking down concrete. The asphalt component has polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which are known carcinogens, but they don't leach out easily either, if they did, this entire country would have contaminated groundwater, because all of the roads that we drive on are paved with things containing polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. They just don't leach into groundwater readily, it takes something like, you, you know, some type of chemical or, or an agent to actually make them break down. That being said, the testing that was done on the Saugerty site, and I'm assuming that this material was the same, did detect those compounds at levels above the acceptable limits. So the first thing we wanna do is test the nearest homeowner well to make sure that those, that that well is not contaminated with these compounds. If that well is contaminated, the next thing to do would be to put a filter on it to remove these types of compounds, and that's actually fairly simple to do.
Yeah, yeah, Bill, 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 I, I have an issue already, I, I know I'm interrupting, but I, I have a huge issue and I would like to be able to share it.
About the testing?
My, my issue is, I'm not hearing Jim, here's what I feel like is happening, I feel like Jim is explaining to us why we shouldn't worry. My issue is, stuff has been dumped on this property that was not legally, it was not legal to dump it, and I thought that what Jim and Vincent were gonna come tell us is how soon are they getting that junk off the property? I feel like what Jim is about to tell us is, well, it doesn't leach into water, it's really not that dangerous, I don't know where you're going with this, but I expected to hear today how soon that junk is going off that property, and are you gonna get to that Jim?
I believe that'll be my part after Jim is done.
Well, well, I feel like Jim's trying to explain to us why we shouldn't worry, and I, I think as Bill, as Bill started out this meeting saying, the board has agreed that junk has gotta go, so, um, so I'm, I don't really care how much testing you're doing today. I wanna know how soon that junk's getting out of there, that's the first thing I wanna know, and then how much you test in the meantime, we can talk about that, but getting the junk out of there is the priority. And so I'm listening, but I definitely wanna hear when we're getting that junk out of there.
Bill, who, who just?
Richard, Richard.
Yep.
Uh, I tend to agree with Laura, but I think if we had an order here, let Jim finish, maybe Vince, but I see Mr. Rubin is here as well from HydroQuest. I'd like to hear from him, and then we can move on in a more orderly fashion, but I do agree with Laura. I, I get nervous when I hear things like, it can't easily move, you know, into the water system, but, you know, can't easily isn't definite, so let's move on.
Jim?
Um, okay.
And then we'll go to Vince.
Uh, you, you know, whether or not what I'm saying i- is appropriate, which it is, and I have almost forty years of experience doing this, and so I know what happens, and I, I'm comfortable with what I'm saying is so. If you wish another person's opinion, I, I would encourage you to do it, but the science is there, the background is there, this is what happens. So that being said, the first thing to do is to protect the sensitive receptors, make sure that those things that are threatened, which in this case is groundwater, and the users of groundwater, the nearest ones are the adjacent landowners. So if their well is contaminated, then you know you have to increase the number of wells that you sample in the adjacent area, and you have to put filters on those, so that protects people from exposure immediately. Then the next step is to get rid of the material. So once you've actually done what you need to do to ensure that no one is being harmed by this, which is where the well testing comes into play. The well testing is very important, the sensitive receptor here is groundwater. Get that tested, make sure there are no risks, and that should happen immediately. So I would not wait on that, so as soon as everybody's comfortable with what we've proposed, then I would suggest sampling.
Okay.
The removal action is very straightforward. It's basically what we in the business call hog and haul. You're going to get an excavator out there and you're gonna scrape this material away, you're gonna load it into trucks, and you're gonna take it to an approved facility, and I'll let Vince talk more about that, because he's been working on that on his end.
You know, okay, so before we go to Vince though, I'll go to Paul, and, and he just, he might be addressing some of what you discussed while it's fresh in everyone's minds, Paul?
Like, first, I agree that the groundwater receptor is the most important thing to look at early on, because we don't know the quantity or the chemical composition of the waste material that was disposed of there, there's no bill of ladings, there's just no evidence of it there. I can say based on my experience with five racketeering cases for C and D at the train general's office, that the chemical suite that is possible, because we don't know what unknowns are in there, could, could be huge, and that, because.
I'm sorry, Paul, I'm, I'm sorry, is there a way you could speak up or move closer to, cuz I just am having a hard time hearing you? I don't know, I may be the only one, but.
No, I'm, I'm having difficulty also.
Okay, thank you.
Because we don't know what chemicals are in this waste mass, it's important that beginning, we test for a comprehensive set of chemicals, the target compound list, which I've recommended, those lists are a good start, as testing goes on and recognizing that groundwater movement is not always rapid, we might be able to reduce the list, but at the onset, because we have no information on the chemicals in there, we should be testing for a very comprehensive list.
The list that was proposed was taken from part five of the New York Health Department's list of drinking water parameters, and we proposed basically the full suite of heavy metals listed on their, there's, their, their list, the full suite of volatile organics, semi-volatile organics, herbicides, pesticides, and just to be on the safe side, emerging contaminants. There's no sense in sampling for things like trihalomethanes and other things that are, are basically part of the treatment of groundwater, I'm sorry, drinking water, so we're sticking to those compounds that are likely to occur and not be a, a function of the, the treatment of water. So if you're adding chlorine to water, you get trihalomethanes. There's, you, I'm assuming no one's adding chlorine to their water, or at least I hope the neighbors aren't doing that. And that would be, I, I think, a really good starting place, it's very comprehensive, it covers virtually every type of impact that you would expect to see from the material that was placed there, and I think the results of that would be a, a really good starting place.
And Paul, Paul, if I could just say, Jim did earlier this afternoon sends me a list, which I sent to the town board and to you as well.
You sent it to the town board?
I, I, just when I got in.
Bubbles, heavy metals, drinking water standard parameters are all good.
Yeah, the list is comprehensive, it really is, we, we picked everything that, that could be in the construction and demolition debris, we, we tried to match it up across the board, pesticides, herbicides, PCBs, emerging contaminants, that's the PFAS or PFOA compounds that people have heard of lately, volatile organics, which will include gasoline range compounds, semi-volatile organics, which would be the oils, the PAHs, really virtually everything you would anticipate seeing, I, I would want there to be no questions about missing something from what we collected, the only things that we left off of the list were those things that aren't likely to be present, like, you know, asbestos is part of the, the, the health department testing, and there may be asbestos in the material, but asbestos doesn't leach, but the reason why you test for asbestos is because it's in the, the water pipes that are buried below the ground, and it, it breaks off of those pipes over time. So it's not really typically dissolved or found in groundwater, so we, we left those kinds of things out. You, you know, and again, it's subject for discussion, if the, if the town and the town engineer wants us to include them, we'll include them, it's just some things just don't make any sense.
So may, so maybe, so that the, the laypeople don't all fall asleep, Paul, you've got the full list, I would ask that you take a look at it and contact me tomorrow and, and the rest of us, and just give us your thoughts, see if, if you feel there's anything that really should be on there that's not.
I asked Mr. MacDiver a question?
Yes.
Um, you mentioned children playing in it.
Who's speaking?
Every, this is Frank Amy.
Frank Amy.
Uh, when my granddaughter comes here almost every day, she has to walk through this stuff to get in my house that has washed down, there's no way you can't, and all the sparkly stuff is trapped in my carpet and ground into my deck and all over the place, and so I guess the child's been playing in it, so what's the hazard?
Uh, the hazard would be found in the materials that are in the, the, the C and D debris.
Okay, and that is washed down, and that's what we're tracking through, I've swept it out the best I can, but it is embedded in my driveway material and everything.
You, you know, I don't disagree with you, my very first thing that I talked to Vince about was removing the material from your property.
Oh, I understand that, I was just wondering what the, what the, you, you mentioned that there could be a problem with children playing in this, well, this has happened now for quite a while.
The, the problem with children playing in it though tends to be ingestion, and it's inadvertent ingestion, they get it on their hands, they put their hands in their mouth. You know, they say a kid can.
She's rolling around on the carpet and playing out on the deck and stuff, so this has probably already happened.
Um, it, it could be, so it should be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Frank?
And how would you address that Jim?
I would, just as I was about to talk to you about, I'd hog and haul it out of there, we, we put together a plan to remove it, now that plan is going to expand, but basically the first thing we would do is isolate the area to prevent, you know, inadvertent people from, I, I'm sorry, to, to keep people out, we would scrape that material out, put it in the back of a truck and get rid of it. Once the move, material was removed, we would test the soil where, from where the material was removed to make sure that no contaminants were left in place that exceed the applicable residential use criteria proposed or promulgated by the DEC in something called part three seventy-five, which are the hazardous waste regulations, and we would put in, bring in, import clean topsoil, put clean topsoil in and seed it, or, or, or at least keep it from migrating away this year, because it's already a little bit late, and that would be very protective of human health and the environment.
I have a question for you. He's got, I, I'm thinking maybe eighty or a hundred feet of casing on his well? So you don't think it's worth testing the, the pile of ooze that came out of it onto his property? You think that's less likely, it's more likely that it went down a hundred feet and leaked into his well and it's not right there?
I, I think that, you know, most of the, if, if the well was installed in accordance with the health department regulations, the likelihood of there being leakage along the annular space of that well is really small. So you have to drive your casing a sufficient distance into bedrock, and you seal that casing in place. Um, it's not to say it always is, and if the bedrock is fractured, you could actually get migration along those fractures.
I'm saying that the, the contaminants are probably right there on the surface. And you're waiting, we're gonna wait for them to go down a hundred feet and then leach into a well?
If, if they're right there on the surface, when we test the well, if there's a pathway, we'll know it.
So I, I think what Lauren might be asking, because it's come up before, would it be more beneficial if we, say it rained in the next day or two, to capture runoff from the hill and test that as opposed to testing the well water?
Or both?
I have a question, this is Erin, and I have a question when you.
Ho, ho, hold on, we're not up to questions yet.
So, my, my sense of it is testing the runoff is less effective because it's absolutely bound to contain suspended solids. And so you're testing the soil, but you're also testing it in a diluted sense, because it's mixed with water. So you're not testing one or the other, you're testing a combination of things, so it's not ideal. So either test the soil or test the water. I'm fearful that if you test the soil, and you only test the soil in that one location, you're gonna come back with what I would call a false negative. So you're gonna come back with soil that says it meets the applicable standards. You would have to sample so many places and so often to verify and to fully identify and characterize that mound, that it becomes a problem. I think you have a better way of thinking about this in terms of the mound. That contractor imported fill and placed fill that is not allowed under town code.
Is the town allowing Vince's guy to do the testing?
Somebody's live.
I'm sorry, there were people talking there, I don't know if I.
Just repeat that last. Jim?
Jim, you were talking about him bringing the bad soil onto the property.
Yeah, he should not have brought that soil in, there, there's two regulations that actually apply, there, there's part three sixty regulations that say you can't bring this type of fill material into a private residence. And there's the town regulation that says you can't dispose of solid waste on somebody's property. So there's two things that this guy did that he wasn't supposed to do, and, and, you know, the contractor, he, he supposedly has a. he supposedly has a license to operate. So he's supposed to know what he is and isn't supposed to do. And so he's at fault. You know, Vincent has clearly got to pursue the fact that he caused a problem. And Vincent may have to incur significant expenses on his own to remove this material. But that being said, he still has recourse against this person for not doing it. So that material is not supposed to be there no matter what. So given that, if I went out and tested it today, there's no guarantee that I would exceed any threshold, any applicable threshold. It's not a certainty. And if I tested it today and it came back clean, all you're doing is giving this guy ammunition to be able to try to leave it in place. And, you know, and it is going to go to court. So why actually give him the information that he needs to actually defend himself in court? Make him get it if he wants it. Make him try to prove that he can leave it in place. The town is very clear about what its regulations are. The town says it can't be placed there. So clearly, it was an illegal disposal of solid waste. And that being said, also, it's contains material that it's not supposed to contain if, according to Part 360, if you place construction or this type of fill material on a private residence. So this guy violated at least two different codes. And, you know, I'm not an attorney, and I won't pretend to be, but I have worked on cases similar to this. And if there's a clear violation of a code, or a rule, or an ordinance, generally, the person that placed the fill is screwed. And I'm, you know, I don't know what would happen. But we all know how the courts work. It's challenging. Just to get a court date in this day and age in COVID is going to struggle. So Vincent is looking into ways to manage this. Now, you know, it's just going to happen. So let's actually find out where the risks are, identify the risks, provide ways of protecting people against exposure, and go from there. The most significant issue is for Frank, you know, because he's the closest. And if this stuff is getting into his well, it's going to show up there first, or is getting into groundwater, it's going to show up first. And if it shows up there, then you know that this is going to be more widespread, and more houses have to be tested, and so on. But if his well is within the acceptable limits, you know, if it meets applicable groundwater standards, then there's less of a risk, we know, and we can proceed with the removal action. We can design it, we can develop a plan, get the plan approved by the agencies that need to approve it, and go from there.
Oh, we shouldn't test it because we're giving him ammunition, but we can remove it? Is that what you're telling me?
Absolutely. You know, unless the disposal facility wants it to be tested before they'll accept it, which probably will be the case, quite frankly, you know, you'll have to provide the disposal facility with some indication that it's not a hazardous waste, or it is a hazardous waste, depending upon the material. That would be information that Vincent would have for his court case against the developer, I'm sorry, the contractor. And obviously, it would become part of the public record. So, you know, the town would know whether or not it's going to be the case. But that would be part of the stepwise process.
I'm gonna stop you for a minute, Jim, and just go to Paul Rubin, to just respond to what you've just heard.
Well, groundwater remains the number one risk. And in any contaminant situation, it's important to get rid of the source material. So the sooner that can be done, the better. In fact, I would think maybe the board might consider a target date for the complete removal of all the soil by the end of this calendar year. So get that out of there, do the testing for all the parameters that are there. Recognize that groundwater might move slowly, but that the well is only 23 feet away from the fill. So we may have to do quarterly monitoring to get a better handle on what's going on here.
Frank? Frank, you still in there?
Yes, Frank's still on.
Frank, last week, you mentioned to me that the testing wouldn't be a problem. Is that correct?
As long as it's done, however, the outcome of this is done, absolutely, we need it tested. By the way, it's, however this works out, that it's supposed to be done.
You mentioned that you had a filter on your, on your well. What are you filtering now?
Sediment.
Just a sediment filter is all it is?
That's all it is.
Good. Okay. Just want to make sure.
I have a question. I have a question for Bill, just quickly. I'm going to make it quick. I don't want to change subject here. But so now, if someone, this should be loaded out immediately. Everybody is obviously on the right, the same page with this. And I'm thinking maybe, now you had said you would, that the contractor could be fined for every load that came in. So if the loads are counted on the way out, wouldn't that recoup some money for the town?
Possibly, yeah. So if there was certain charges, that would be- That would be up to a judge.
Right, right. I understand that, but it's just an idea.
Yep. You know, Frank, I'm not, it, right now, we have a legal proceeding against Vince as the property owner, for having a dump, for having an illegal dump, and for burying construction debris, which allows us a fine per load. Okay? But the bigger caveat in there, and our attorney feels very comfortable that this is enforceable, is that it calls for remediation of the site. That's, that's big for us. So we won't have to pay a dime. This is gonna, Vince has got to pick this up. I'll help him in his lawsuit against Corollas, because ultimately, I think he's, he's the bad guy here. But right now, it's Vince's problem to deal. If Vince can't do it, once that, once we've won in court, we could turn around and hire the contractor to do it, and it would be put back. We would pay the contractor, but it would be put back on his taxes. We would have a way to collect it. So the town would be made whole. And that's the mechanism we're going to go through.
Okay, but we are going to get this removed immediately, as Vince said in the last meeting also.
I'm not clear on that, Bill. I thought Vince is saying he's gonna remove it.
Well, I said, if Vince couldn't do it, Vince has indicated, given to me every indication and us, that he's, he's prepared to get started on it.
I'd like to hear from Vince. I know-
Oh, Vince, tell us about the plan for the removal.
Well, we've got two contractors coming to bid on it. And we just got ahold of them the other day. One contractor, as you know, we've cut out, so we're down to two.
Okay.
And I'm just waiting for bids to come in on it.
Can you mention the, actually, you know what? Let's not mention the contractors' names now, as long as they're not Corollas.
Another question I have, and I'm just, it's just hitting me. This site was surveyed by the town. Why did it go this far? I'm just, I'm just wondering how it got through, because it was already a cease and desist on it. But now it's, it's like, it was okay to open it up again.
Because your wife threw me off the property, Vince. We had no evidence until July, when the heavy waters washed away and exposed the concrete and the asphalt. And that's your trouble. You buried construction, or you allowed construction debris to be buried. You know what? It's a shame that you and I weren't able to continue our conversation that January day up at the building inspector's office, when your wife tackles me, because I think maybe we could have avoided a lot of heartache for everybody.
And I'm also amazed that the, that this falls on the homeowner instead of the contractor.
Excuse me, the first big washout was June 11th, and there are plenty of pictures of it.
Actually, Frank, my apologies. You're right. It, June.
Right, right. And then when I spoke to Lauren in September, they still had no idea what was going on.
So Vince, continue with your plan for removal. How quickly?
Well, I'm on it. It's as quick as the gears will grind. You know, it's, these guys are all busy, supposedly, and they're coming by. I had one guy come by, but I'm not using him for reasons we talked about. The other two are still, should be here, hopefully, this week yet. And I'm to understand that this is a very quick process. Everybody's talking three, four days, maybe. That's long.
So would you suggest, then, to the audience here, that by the end of the year is not out of reason?
Yeah, any weather constraints, obviously. I'm hoping when Jim does his testing, we're going to find that there's nothing crazy here, that we're going to be changing life forms in the amebas, you know, just, I think it's just, I don't think the dirt's as bad as we think it is.
I hate it when people say that, because the point is, get it the heck out of there. It's illegally there. And I hate when anybody says anything like, oh, we'll test, maybe it's not that bad. Get it the heck out of there. And I agree with Paul, who said, it ought to be leaving by year end. So Vince, I get it that you're dependent on a contractor to do it, you're dependent on a contractor to give you an estimate, you're dependent on a contractor to schedule it. But there's got to be an urgency to this, because this stuff just can't stay there past year end. It just has got to go. So if you can't, and Bill already said, if your contractors can't get it, the town can do it, and then charge you on your tax bill. But that stuff, I mean, I'd like to see us, I know we meet the second and third Tuesday of every month, and we schedule this meeting, two, two happy special meeting. But I'd like to know in a week, when you're going to get that stuff out of there.
Let me just be clear, though. Legally, for us to collect the money, we have to have the decision by the court. So that has to go through the court in order for us to do that. Any other expenses won't be paid until that court suit is dealt with. But-
That doesn't, that doesn't pertain to him?
No, absolutely, absolutely not.
Let's be clear about that. Yeah, I would like, I would like, we're talking about water testing, removal. I think Paul, Mr. Rubin has a couple suggestions too, about the disposal site and testing the fill, all those things. I think what needs to be done is we line up dates in an agreement as soon as possible, and get it on record. And that also might mean follow-up water testing. That would mean a follow-up water testing. So I mean, I'm just trying to bring some order to the process here, of how we're going to approach this.
Well, it's driven by contractor scheduling.
No, I understand that, Vince.
That's, I gotta get that first, before we can set down a timeline.
I'm not saying that we have to put that timeline in place tonight. I'm just saying, as a board member, I want this down in writing on a timeline, what exactly is going to be done. Before we agree to it.
I think what I would like to see is the water testing, the testing done by our next meeting, which is next Thursday. So that's a little over a week. Not that the results would be back, that's going to be dependent on the lab, which incidentally, before you pick a lab, you were going to run that by Dennis for his approval, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot to put that in the letter I sent you. It's Alpha Analytical Labs.
Okay.
They're an ELAB certified laboratory. They're great.
No, for the, for the people listening, let them, let it be known that, you know, they were talking about my guy, my guy being Jim. My guy doesn't do the testing. So it's not that we're going to fudge a test. He's going to oversee a test, and it will be sent out to a certified lab that's completely, I don't even know who it is. It's not the fact that we're testing in ourselves.
And what you're saying, Bill, is to send this to Breneur?
I'll check with Dennis in the morning. I want to follow up. He seems good with the list of, of particulates that they're going to test for. But again, I want to have a conversation. You just said this list is acceptable to me. I want to have a follow-up. I'll ask him about Alpha Analytical. And Jim, I would just say, you know, well, of course, you're going to have to reach out to the Amys. I would ask that you do it with enough lead time, so that if Mr. Rubin wanted to be there to observe the collection as well, that he be there.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. And just to clarify, it would be someone from my office collecting the samples. But we have an ethical standard that we're obligated to abide by, because we're a licensed professional engineering firm in the state of New York. And, and I'm also a licensed professional. So I just, you know, I'm never going to do anything that would put that at risk, not for one second. The data that we collect would be relied upon by anybody. And we'll collect it in such a manner that we presume that it's going to go to court, and so that it can be defended by anybody later on. So I guess, you know, I just want the town to know that. I know Vince said we're going to hire somebody else. But it would be someone who comes from my staff, who's trained, who knows how to do this. And we would have the data analyzed at Alpha Analytical under normal chain of custody procedures. So there's a start-to-finish process of how those samples are collected and handed off. And, you know, I can make sure that Mr. Rubin is available, if he wants to be, so he can witness it. You know, we would prefer to sample before the filter system, not after the filter system, because the filter system could actually be removing some of the contaminants. And we'd like to make sure that we're really characterizing the actual groundwater, not filtered groundwater. So, but we can work that out with Frank.
Is that possible, Frank?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to, how I can get it before my filter, but we'll figure it out.
Is the filter before or after your pressure tank?
It's after the pressure tank.
So you, there should be a valve down on the bottom of the pressure tank?
Right, right.
They should be able to utilize without taking the filter off.
It's common for plumbers, or, you know, people who've installed these things, to actually have access to the actual groundwater. There's almost always a spigot before the tank and right from the well, so.
There is not on this. There's just on the tank. Anyway, just a question, a couple of questions for Bill or Jim, or both. Jim, last meeting, you mentioned that we should probably test the soil underneath the material as soon as the material's removed. That would give you a good idea of what's there. And second of all, second of all, shouldn't someone be watching or supervising this contractor, whoever it is, I have no idea, doesn't matter, their removal, to make sure that they get all the required material, and they do it correctly. And that way, you can also count how many loads go out.
We've indicated as much to Vince already, so he has to make that decision, of course. But, you know, it's in his best interest to make sure that there's a professional observing what's happening, so that, you know, when he goes to do his own cost recovery action, he can actually have all the data he needs to back that up.
Yes, and his ground and his, his well isn't as much danger as everyone else's, because it's on his property.
Without a doubt.
So Frank, I would say that, you know, the town can't have the building inspector sit up there for three or four days. But I'm guessing there's probably a couple of councilmen and supervisors who might do a few shifts, so.
I just think somebody needs to watch, because you know how that goes. If somebody's, somebody gives a bid on a project, if they can cut a corner somewhere, they might do it if nobody's watching.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, we know who the contractor's going to be, and he's a reputable one.
Okay, good, good.
Let me ask you a question. As each, and this might go to Paul or Jim, as each truck is, how do we test it going out? Do we test each truckload? I mean, you say you need to document this. How does all that work?
I can address it, or Paul, if you would like to. But there's a process that, so the, one of the first things that we have to do is identify a facility that will accept this material, because it is a solid waste. So, you know, and it's defined as a solid waste under state regulation and town ordinance. So there's a requirement for testing that material based on the amount of that material and the facility requirements. Under current Part 360 regulations, they would have to have taken somewheres in the neighborhood of four to eight samples of that material, just to bring it onto the site, to prove that it met the applicable regulations. And some of those would be composite samples, and some of those would be, would have been what we call grab samples, or discreet samples. Obviously, none of that was done. But when it goes out, the same level of testing will have to be done to bring it to whatever facility it goes to. So that, you know, that's when we'll find out for sure if it's a hazardous waste, which is unlikely, but, you know, it's worth testing. Then that would actually allow that material- Then that would actually allow that material to be accepted. And then to confirm that it was gone, we would take samples in the footprint of where the excavation occurred of the native soil that remained. And we would compare those sample results to the unrestricted use criteria in Part 375. So that would be, that would imply that it was, you know, before disposal conditions existing at that point in time. We may not be able to remove everything, but we'll be able to remove 99% of it or more.
And the testing as it goes out is done by whom?
Well, typically, you know, and we work at a lot of brownfield sites and hazardous waste sites. And so our firm would would provide oversight. And as the material was removing, we would be collecting the samples. Before the material is disposed of at the facility, the facility will want to see test results. So there'll have to be an excavator that goes in, digs some samples, takes them, get them processed to the lab and get them to the facility. So the facility will accept them. Then as the material is being removed, typically there's a grid laid out. And then samples are taken of the remaining soil, the natural native soil that remains in place after the contamination is removed. After the impacted material is removed. And that's done by our firm or somebody like Paul or anybody like that. But that's typically a a professional experienced in this kind of thing, who knows how to collect samples and knows how how to prepare chains of custody and so on and so forth, would have those sampled. What you would sample for would be based on the initial results that you took of the fill material to dispose of it at at whatever facility it goes to. So there are a number of different landfills that accept the material. They use that kind of material as cover. There are also facilities that accept construction and demolition debris and process it. So there's a lot of different options to remove this material. It just depends on probably price and convenience. Scheduling is sometimes difficult, you know. We're going to want to remove 500 plus yards of material a day. So, you know, 10 dump trucks or so, maybe more. Or, you know, if we bring 18 wheelers, five 18 wheelers, you know. So it it's going to go fast and we have to find a place that can accept that much material over the course of a day.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, did you have any thoughts or comments on what you just heard there?
Well, what he's outlined is excellent.
Okay.
The fact that his firm does this all the time, he knows the regulations, the testing. In order to get it disposed anywhere, you need to know what's in it, so that's covered. And then, once you've removed it down to your base initial level, the testing that follows sampling results will be in part or testing parameters will be based on what's found in the material that's disposed of.
I also have a concept and I wanted to run by the board here. If it was to happen, if it was feasible, to get the contractor to come back here, take it out and put it on his own property.
No.
He's got enough of his own.
You want a resolution, Vince? It is important to have Bill of Lading, though.
I think poor Fred Costello, though, would not be too happy.
He's willing to share all that stuff.
He's got three fields of it.
All right.
I thought Paul was going to say something.
I was gonna say, we want to know the quantity. Obviously, you have an idea if there are contractors out there, but as it's removed, careful should be kept for each truck that goes out.
I'm going to break a second.
I I think everybody agrees there.
It would be wherever, whatever disposal facility was accepting it, there would be a wait ticket for each, with each load that was disposed of. So we would keep track of those wait tickets for for a million different reasons. But, you know, there there would be quite a, you know, a very rigorous record collecting process that would go along with this. And, you know, the final report would document where this material went, how many tons were disposed of. You know, the testing results. Then there would be the report which documented the remaining conditions and so on, so. There would be a lot of effort that goes into this. You know, Vince, you know, will retain an attorney who's experienced with this sort of stuff. And that attorney will instruct him as to what steps are necessary so that he can recover his costs. So or, you know, at some point in time. In the best world, the town won't have to spend any of its money. But if they do, the same processes will apply. You will do the same exact steps. You know, we may not be involved, but the town's engineer would be involved and they would do the the same exact process that I just described, so.
Any more questions, comments from the board?
No, I'd just like to know where Frank is with all this and how he's feeling.
If the board's got no questions, we'll go to Frank.
Well, I I do have a question, but we can take Frank's statement first, though.
Okay.
Everything sounds like it's going the right direction. I mean, I think number one is immediate removal and Vince has agreed to that. The testing of the soil underneath the material makes a lot of sense to me. And the water testing makes sense to me. I'm not a scientist, but we're going to have to just follow their recommendations. And I just, one comment, I think you're going to be very surprised, Vincent, also, since you weren't there for the majority of this happening, at how many loads are actually in there. I know it's in the hundreds.
I think I have invoices for 100 for sure.
That that's, that's a very, very small portion of it. Not to scare you, but I I know where you're at. So, anyway, thank you very much. I think Aaron Moran might like to speak too when the time comes.
Vince, I'll go to you next and then the public.
I'll have a question whenever it's my turn.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
So so my question is, we were, we talked a while back in the conversation about testing the runoff. And I heard Jim say, well, you know, it'll get diluted, all these reasons why not to test the runoff. But I would like to have us agree as a board, do we want the runoff also tested? We all want, I don't see it as either or, test the well or the runoff. The well definitely needs to be tested, but the idea of testing the runoff is the neighbors need to know what's on their yards. Like the fellow that was here a week ago that said he had just planted a garden and now he's getting runoff from that property. So I guess I would like the board to decide whether or not they want runoff tested at all in addition to the well testing.
Well, why don't we, we've heard what Jim has to say. Paul, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think one consideration we should keep in mind here is that perhaps the resolution needs to be redrafted to reflect what parameters being tested, the soil testing after soil, after the fill is removed. Time schedule, I think all that needs to be in a modified resolution that we all agree to.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of that. And I talked to Richard, well, I know Rich, I think Lauren really did the res, well, I guess the WC did the resolution. But I had talked to Richard about whether he would work with me to change the resolution because that was why I voted no. As Bill said at the start, I fully agree, clean this up, this is horrible. But the resolution didn't hit the mark in my view and I voted no. But I'm certainly willing to, and I can step back because this is really Lauren's project. I don't want to step on Lauren's toes.
Actually, I hate, I hate to hear the sound of my own name.
You know what, though? Why don't you, why don't you and I work on the resolution together?
Who's you and I, which you?
Lauren and I will will put it together.
Perfect.
And the other thing I'd like to say, Vince, is if if you're going to get on this and clean it up, first, I want to say that's the right thing to do and I want to say thank you. Yeah. And secondly, then we don't really need to test it if we're going to take it out of there and get it tested when it goes to a landfill. We still need to test the water, but if it's, if it's going to go in a couple of weeks, hopefully, then it'll be tested then. So then.
The only thing I got a question on, Lauren, is we test the water now. What about a follow up, follow up testing? I'm not sure how, you know, maybe Paul or.
I think Paul and Jim can can work together to to come up with a program.
I'd like to make one other suggestion. First, Vince, it's great that you're working so well with this. But when you're having this water testing done, I recommend, because there are a number of potential wells impacted that the same testing should be done on your well right now before, along with Frank's.
We're, we're talking about that. That's, that's definitely up for an option. I'm kind of uphill from Frank, so most of the stuff that's up here, my well is behind it all. It would go the other way, unfortunately. While I'm on the line here, real quick, I know I got a lot of my neighbors on here.
Yep.
And this never meant to happen, guys. I got screwed. But I'll come out in the end.
Can I, may I say something? Can you hear me, Bill?
Go ahead, Cindy.
Vince, I want to say something. Your mom and dad were my children's babysitters when they were tiny little kids 48 years ago. And I know, and I know your family. And just in terms of all that they put into the land and how much they love the land, I, it is my deepest hope and prayer that you will respect and cherish their memory by doing everything that's right to restore our beautiful shady to the way it was when they enjoyed it so much. And I I ask you for that, being sensitive to what has happened. And I hope that that is the outcome for all of us Shadyites and Woodstockers in your parents' name and memory.
That's why I'm here.
Thank you, Cindy.
It'd be easy to skate it, but I don't plan to skate it.
Well, that's good to hear.
And I'll second, I think, whoever said before, Vince, thank you so much for stepping up because it is a big deal. And, you know, you didn't, you didn't plan for all this for sure. But unfortunately, you need to be part of the solution and thank you so much for stepping up to be part of the solution.
Yes.
Who, who else in the public would like to offer some words?
I would.
Go ahead, Erin.
Hi, thanks for letting me talk. I would just like to, I guess, first say thank you to the town board and Bill and for getting the attention on this that it really truly, truly needs to have on it. So thank you for for doing that. And one thing that that I've been trying to kind of wrap my head around because I see both sides of the table here. And and I can see how Vince had some confusing signals sent his way during all of this. And I, I've been through the files and everything and I can see where the stop work order was issued by Ellen by the zoning enforcement officer on June 17th. And then it was lifted. And I'm just wondering, why was it lifted? Because it doesn't seem like her requirements were sufficiently met. And I am curious as to why that was lifted because it seems like that sent a signal or a message to Vince that it was okay to do this, which clearly I think everyone on this call can agree is not the case.
Well, the time for this, again, you'd have to ask the building inspector specifically, but my understanding is stop work order was lifted because Vince did provide some documentation. And he provided a plan to stabilize the bank, which is what the stop work order was all about. I would point out, though, that the citation he was given for the violations of Section 192, the solid waste law, were given at the same time and those were not lifted. Those are what are, you know, what are, what we would ultimately pursue, what we're pursuing at this point to to ensure that this happens, so.
All right, because I've looked at the file, actually, you were there, Bill, when I reviewed the file and I didn't see any of this in it. Is there, is there a way, I've even foiled, is there a way, Bill, maybe I could circle around with you after this call and I could actually see everything that's in the file because?
I don't, I don't have the file right now, but Paul, come tomorrow. Actually, I thought you were going to meet with Ellen last week. I know she was waiting for you at one point.
She hasn't returned my calls.
Okay.
And I just mentioned in light of Aaron's question, perhaps when you and Mr. Rose are together and I'm sure any of us from the board might help, but we can also start looking at a fill law?
Absolutely, I have said, you know, as I mentioned, I did send out five or six. There was one that I heavily commented on. I sent the others because I think they they offered some interesting points. If you, I'll, I'll cobble the law together if the board can respond back with the different elements that they like. And I can put a draft together, but I'm, I need a little guidance as to what you're.
I'm just saying, I read, I read what you highlighted and all that and I thought it was perfectly fine. I don't know that each of us has to go through and highlight each one. I think if we pull that together and I'll, I'll help you, not asking you just to be the one. But I think we can, like you said, put it together and perhaps by at least November, December, begin to seriously propose it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think. One minute, Julie. Any fill brought in from offsite should be specified in type and and rough amount on a set of approved drawings and subject to inspection. Now, again, again, we can put something in there so it doesn't apply to like shale and crushed stone and and 400 fines because we don't want to be jumping on anybody that's doing their driveway. Right. Anything like that. But if they're bringing in any kind of serious fill material, it should be specified. This will, this will, this law would stop this from ever happening again. Yeah, that's what we need. I mean, some of the frustration we've all experienced it is that there just wasn't a lot to to sink our teeth into with Corolla's. So, anyone else? Julie, you had your, you're gonna have to unmute yourself.
I just have a question or request. Is there any way that there could be like a regular email update sent out to the Reynolds Lane neighbors? So that we get like, partially also because of this dumping, it's a lot of noise and a lot of dust and all this stuff. And it would be good for us to know like the schedule of removal or also any, anything they find either in the water or in the soil, that there's some kind of way of communicating this information from the town?
Send, send, if you were one of the neighbors, cobbles together a list and sends me an email with all the the addresses on it, I'll have Ashley take care of that.
Yeah, because particularly we'd like to know the schedule, like, like really know what the schedule is. Also, in terms of the construction and when it's, I mean, not the the removal, when it's going to be happening.
Well, the the next step would be, as I mentioned earlier, and I, I would like to see that the testing is taken care of by Thursday. And then maybe the following Tuesday. Actually, on Thursday, maybe Vince and I can communicate or Vince, Lauren and I can communicate. We'll see where we're at with the contractors. And when Vince is ready to to pick a contractor, maybe then we could have another one of these meetings.
Okay, so I'll, Jesse and I can put together Reynolds Lane neighbor email list and I'll get it to you.
Do me a favor, though, because when Jesse sent me, for some reason, her emails were going to spam. So if you send one, just if you could follow up, if it comes from Jesse, follow up with the, or let me know when you're going to send.
Okay, and there's, because we have some new neighbors who are.
Jordan.
Yeah, so I was gonna pop in and say that, A, we want to introduce ourselves. We're the new owners, David and I'm Jordan, of 49 Reynolds Lanes, so.
Welcome to the country.
So we're catching up, obviously, in many ways of of what's been going on. But we'd love to kind of tap in and this is our first kind of ability to do that. But whatever you guys need from us in terms of getting contact information, I can make sure that, you know, we're.
Actually, Julie, instead of you putting it together, why doesn't everybody here who wants to be on the email chain?
Put it in the chat.
No, no, don't do that. If you could send me an email at supervisor@woodstockny and I'll put together an email list.
Yeah, that's good.
And if, and if anybody else who's not here today wants to be on, ask them to do the same thing.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Can we send it to Eslovensky@woodstocknewyork.org?
That would actually be better. Either one will be fine.
It'll actually get done if you send it to Ashley.
Well, we have her email address, that's the only reason I'm asking.
That's, that's fine, then, either one will do. Ashley does, for some reason, she get, actually, she gets some emails and my email that I don't. get, actually, she gets some emails and my email that I don't get. So.
Yeah, and there's some neighbors who aren't here who are very interested in. I'll just spread the word and get them on that list, too.
You know, there's a new couple in Grace Murphy's house. I don't see them on here, but if somebody has their contact, Joe, maybe you do.
I do have their contact. I've spoken to them. They're aware of it. I'm gonna see them this weekend. I'll tell them to send their email address as well.
Supervisor, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So are we gonna have any special meetings before our first regular meeting in November?
We have our budget hearing next Thursday.
Oh, right. Well, I didn't know if we're gonna have any status on this. I didn't know if we should have any special meeting on this topic.
I'm hoping that that Jim or Vince tells me that the water has been collected by then.
Okay, but we still need Vince to give us the schedule. He's working with his contractors. He doesn't have a schedule yet, so at some point we'll need to know.
Yes. So what we'll do is, when they have their, have met with their contractors in the next two, two weeks or so, then we'll sit down, we'll have another one of these meetings when it's appropriate, and maybe bring the contractor in as well.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Everybody go vote.
We did. Yes.
How long did you wait, Cindy?
What?
How long did you have to wait?
No, we went Sunday morning. We got there about 9:15 and it opened at 10. And we got to the pole. We got inside about 10:30. It was raining. That was the only problem.
Okay.
But it was beautifully done. It was really beautifully done and organized and very sanitized. So it was great.
You know, we've had, not really a frustration, but the cars parking on Rock City Road and it's been a couple of times. And the Board of Elections called me today apologizing profusely. And I said, don't apologize. I'm happy, you know, yes, it's a little bit of a pain in the neck, but I'm happy to see all these people voting.
Mostly, everybody was off the road. They were on the curb, you know.
Yeah, I've been by there a couple, both days, and it's been great. And I really want to extend an appreciation to the Board of Elections for what they're doing. I know I've voted here for 40, 50 years, maybe, for 72. Yeah. I'm getting old, Jesus.
Oh, wow, are you?
No, no, you've got, you've gotten old.
I thought it was born old.
I've never seen anything like this. I have never waited to vote in my life. And they're down past the gate of the cemetery again today. It's amazing.
Every day at least once, I've seen that happen, where they're almost to the colony.
Hey, Bill, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So we have like 10 days of early voting. It ends this Sunday.
Correct.
The county has five voting spots.
Yes.
Between Woodstock all the way down to Ellenville. So that's why we're getting so inundated with voters.
Correct.
What I suggest for anyone that does not want to wait in line, anybody that's a little bit handicapped and cannot stand in line, wait till Election Day. Then Woodstock's going to open up with four of its own voting districts. And you're not gonna wait in line. You're not going to stand outside in the rain. So my suggestion is, if you go down Rock City Road and they're parked on the road, keep on going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right.
I'm gonna vote on Election Day because I have voted on Election Day my whole life. And the same woman asked me, just points to my signature and asked me to sign. And I always ask her if she wants the CID.
And guess when I'm voting? November 3. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in on Election Day also. So anybody that that's concerned, I don't know, people are concerned that they feel that if they don't get their vote in, it's not gonna count. November 3 is Election Day. That's the day to vote if you don't want to wait in line.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Jackie.
Welcome.
So if there are no other comments, I will call for German.
I'll suck it up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Night, Jack. Hi, Jack.
I got it.
I'm the old Shadyite.
Happy birthday, Reggie.
Thank you. Love you, Jane.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Reggie, can I sing to you?
Sure. Let's hear it.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Reggie. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Wow, and that's reported.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Can I get a copy of that for the Historical Society?
Yes, yes.
Oh, goodness.
You know what, Ashley? I know you usually cut after the meeting is over, but leave that little tidbit.
I can't even turn you guys off tonight. What the heck?
Good night. All right, good night.